Hello, Letcher County. My name is Kevin Hall, and I am the owner of the all-new Hall &amp; Jones Funeral Home, Jenkins Chapel. We're here to provide you with honest, sincere service in your time of need. The people in Jenkins, McRoberts, in Fleming, Neon, in Palm, Virginia, they're such hard-working people, they've worked with their hands their whole life. Many of you are U M W A members. My grandfather was a U M W A member, and I seen how wonderful they took care of my grandmother when something happened to my grandfather. With that same token, that's what we're here to do for you and your family, to take care of you. I invite you to stop by our funeral home, come in and visit with us, or give us a call at (606) 821-2191.
Tom Keating offers years of experience as a certified specialist for Napa Collision Centers. His hours are Monday through Friday from 8 until 5 o'clock. For a free estimate, stop by or call him at (634) 9296. Quality service that you can trust with an honest and fair price. Tom King's Collision Center in Neon. Call (634) 9296 for a free estimate.
I'm Tom King, and I approve this message. Do you have Medicare? Have questions about Medicare Part D? Call me, Scott Lovelace, at (606) 768-3589. Would you like to know what Medicare Part A and Part B covers, and the amount you pay for covered services? Do you need information about a plan that pays for hearing aids? I can answer these questions for you. So call me, Scott Lovelace, at (606) 768-3589. I specialize in Medicare, so I can help you.
meeting. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ernestine. Here. Chuck.
Here.
Sean.
Here.
Rick.
Here.
Quinn.
Yeah.
There.
All righty, if you'd raise your hand, you'll be perfectly willing to.
Dear Lord, we're just thankful to be able to gather here tonight and discuss this over city. And Lord, as we're discussing business, that we pray that we do so according to your will. In the Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Do you want to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. In your packet, you have the minutes from the mock speech. Entertain a motion, do it first.
Motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, same side. Also, the financial reports are in your packet from March.
I make a motion to approve the financial report, Mr. Boyd.
All right, we've got a motion and a second.
My second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, same side. All righty, now we're down to the cred report.
Um, a lot of, a couple of projects first, and then the mayor asked me to kind of do a Grants 101 for you. So the Jenkins Revitalization Resiliency Plan, it's for $100,000. It is through C D B G, uh, D R. That one, uh, we have received our M O A, the mayor signed it, um, we've got to send it up, and then we're waiting on the official signature from Frank Kirk, and then we'll be able to advertise that one. The Jenkins City Hall ADA, uh, we bid that out, guilty construction, it's going to be your contractor on that, they already started construction, and, uh, they are moving along on that. Uh, so that's to do some, um, ADA renovations later, things like that here, um, in the city hall. Um, and then your Jenkins wastewater treatment plant improvement project, uh, we have received your C D B G, D R, uh, M O A on that one, so again, that one, uh, we're just waiting on official signatures on that one. Uh, as the mayor and I was speaking before the council meeting started, uh, we are $377,337 short, so we're going to try to see what we can do on that one. And then, uh, we do have the Jenkins wastewater treatment plant repairs project, uh, we need bids to proceed on that one, but as the mayor and I was discussing, we may just switch that back, um, to do the full improvements of the wastewater treatment plant project, which would actually reduce that amount that we're short. Um, and then on a side note, we did have, uh, two of your Jenkins dam projects, one of them we've been looking for funding on. Originally, did not qualify for the grant program funding, get your match, but they've just recently changed that in this legislation section, so we're going to put that back in, uh, and hopefully we'll be able to get you your match money on that. Um, we are waiting on FEMA to approve our hazard mitigation plan, uh, that's kind of been the holdup on the other one that we already have funded for. As soon as they do that, and then they'll, uh, we had to ask for an increase of funding, uh, because there was some structural damage there than what we knew about, um, so we had to ask for an increase of funding, so we're just waiting on them to improve the increase there. Our hazard mitigation plan is at FEMA, waiting to be approved. As soon as it's approved, then we'll be able to give that increase of funding. So that's just kind of a, a rough sketch, um, you do have this in front of you. Anytime you guys have questions, feel free to call me at the office, ask the mayor if he can call me, we can meet him up, like, you know, as quickly as you want, um, as far as funding on any projects that we have here.
And what she's talking about, grants, grants, is the legislator puts money in this program, and it helps do matches for the federal side of it, which is great for us, because if we had to come up $20,000, we have to find it. Uh, but Army Corps of Engineers, when McConnell brought them in, they come in, and I thought it was great, but it's a three billion dollar study that they have to do. So in that three billion dollar study, we had to come up with me and a half dollars. So hopefully, we can use that to come up with that, and that's the long-term piece. Now, the other one she was talking about is, uh, when we had Snobbo come in and take a look at it, we're looking at, at some short-term fixes to just to get it, uh, structured and sound and, and ready to go, which, you know, it's, it's doing what it's supposed to do, so. So we're getting ready to talk about these other grants, and these is all the pieces you have to do. We have to hunt here, we have to go here, we jump through this first hoop, then we have to set a hoop on fire, and then we have to jump back through it after it's melted. So that, that's just part of where it's at, so.
Let me get into this section. Well, back in February of last year, we got this. And, and every time we get one of these, everybody says, "Well, they've got money in the bank." Well, I asked the governor where this goes, and where that bank, the big blue blank, big blue bank was, and, because this one go through the drive-thru here. But this, this is only a notice of funding announcement, N O F A is what they said. So this is, once we get through a whole lot of hoops, this gets us to the point that we know we're going to get the money, but then we have to go through all those hoops and jump and work with cred and engineers and procure, uh, contractors and everything else. So anyway, this was this. So now she's going to go through, have we got two here, and then what we have to do going forward to make sure we're compliant, we don't have to pay nothing back, and we meet all the federal requirements.
So the general misconception is, once the governor comes and he announces, you know, your funding, and he presents you with a check, is that the money is automatically there, and you can go, you know, straight into construction. You can't. Uh, so what we did is, we created this little sheet, um, so that everybody would kind of have a better understanding of how you get to that check and what happens after you get that check. Uh, so there is a long planning cycle. Uh, so we started in June of 2022, actually planning out this project. Uh, you'll hear us refer to it as the Jenkins ADA project, um, they call it that, Articulate Barrier Remover Project. Uh, so basically, we started with the mayor, um, and some others, uh, just even beginning to plan this project in June of 2022. And what that was, is we researched what we could do, uh, what was available funding-wise out there, um, and then we went and we procured an engineer. Uh, it was an investment engineering that ended up being procured. Uh, we had to follow very strict guidelines as to how we even procured an engineer, um, for this project. You had to actually send out letters, you have to advertise it in the newspaper, uh, there is Kentucky Apex that it has to be put on, you have to, I mean, there's a very long process. So then we went and we did that. Um, as far as that was concerned, then we sat back down with the engineer, we brought them in, we had to do meetings all over again, um, they had to look over your building to see what would qualify, what would not qualify. Uh, from that point, then they were able to actually even give us a call system as far as, you know, um, how much it was going to cost us. From there, we were able to actually start to apply for funding. Um, we went through many cycles of being turned down for grants, um, then we had to look at mapping, um, you know, that went from June of 2022 to January of 2023. Uh, so you know, it was several months to even get to where we could even do mapping of this project. Um, then after that, uh, we started applying, and this is actually one of the quicker-moving projects. Um, I've had projects that's taken seven, eight years, uh, so.
We had a sidewalk took about 14.
Yeah, and I've got one project that's taken 26 years. Uh, so I, I mean, this is actually one of our quicker-moving projects. Um, so, uh, we did our, we did our G I S, um, we sent in our applications, and we actually received our award notice in May of 2023. Um, and then, of course, the governor came down, did the check presentation, um, and then we were allowed to actually formally announce it out to the public at that point in time. Uh, then the engineer could actually formally do his engineering designs. Um, this actually takes several months, uh, because there is a lot of intricate details that goes into even designing a project. Um, it can take them, you know, four or five months, sometimes six months, even design a project to get it down and get it even approved, uh, by Frank Kirk. Uh, you know, if it's a water project, Division of Water has to approve it. If it's a building, it has to be approved as far as, you know, building permits, things of that nature. Um, we had to make sure that the city was up to date to audits, thank goodness that your city maintains your audits very well. Um, and then we were able to acquire our grant agreement in January 2024. So you see that it took us, um, quite some time to even get our grant agreement. The grant agreement says that you can now, um, bid your project, so, um, then, uh, or not bid your project, but you can now actually go forward in your project. So then we had to do an environmental process, uh, to get our release of funding, uh, we had to go through a lot of federal tribal permitting, um, because you do have to consult tribal, even though we do not have active tribes here, there are still tribes that consider stakes in Kentucky. Uh, so we had to consult with tribes, uh, and a tribe can say yes or no, your project can go forward or not. Uh, so then we had to consult with a lot of other federal agencies to ask them if they had any issues with this project going forward, even though it's a building project. And you can even imagine how much force it is on a water or sewer line running in the ground. Um, so, you know, then after, once all that was completed, uh, that took us to December of 2024. So at that point in time, uh, we had to talk with the engineer, make sure that they had schedules, uh, all of that, they had their permits in place, uh, then we had to obtain wage rates for this project, because it does have to go through federal wage rates. Um, all the contractors and the people have to be paid federal wage rates on this project. Uh, we had to make sure that Build America, Buy America, uh, was established in this, because this project does have to meet that as well. Um, so then, uh, we had to have some more meetings, the engineer had to get their bid packet together, uh, we had to submit that, we had to have that posted for so long, um, and then came the bid opening, and then we had to go back, we had to review all that to make sure that it met, um, they had their bid bonds, all of that, so there's a lot that goes through the process of this. And this is what nobody really truly understands as far as, um, as far as, you know, what really goes behind the scenes. All most people understand is that you see a check, you think the money's there, and it is, but there's a lot of processes that have to go on behind the scenes that the engineer is doing, that cred is doing, in order to get you to where you can actually break ground on your project. So that took us to January 2025. Um, then we brought it before you guys, you guys agreed that we could avoid the project, and then from there, uh, March of 2025, we were able to say, yes, we can go to construction, and here in April, we are finally under construction, but this will be several months before we finally complete construction. So, uh, you know, your typical project can last anywhere from six months to two years, depending on what type of project it is. And then we have all kinds of closeout paperwork that happens behind the scenes that can take several months to even close that project down. So, you know, your typical project, like I said, can take, you know, anywhere from six to eight years, and that's just a typical project. This one actually moved a lot quicker in the grand scheme of things than what most projects do. So we were very fortunate that it moved as quick as it did.
And tonight, we'll get down to the first round of money.
Yes.
And the first round of money is a, is a drawdown, so we never really get the money. We get the work done, through everything Jennifer just talked about, then we're able to submit a request, and then if we do 9% of the work, which I think is where we're at right now, we get 9% of the money. So we've never really, other than just coming through the bank quickly, it's, we don't have a hold of it too long, so. And the Buy American piece, uh, just transparent type stuff, uh, we're dealing with that right now. And the four minutes before progress meeting today, they found out that they met the buy the threshold for the elevator company that's building the elevator, so.
And we have to have that approved in order to even move forward, um, because it may or may not meet Buy American, so. So now we have to go back and make sure that it does.
And then the elevator company that's doing that wasn't signing the contract on the elevator till we got a extension on the timeframe of building it, because they want 20-week leave time on top of six weeks they'd already been dealing with it. So not to confuse everything, just understand there's a lot to this, there's, you know, every time we go after one of these grants, there's stuff happens before, there's stuff happens during, there's stuff happens after, and we have to bid everything, we have to procure, we have to do, uh, all the things that the agencies that provide the money says we have to do. And so anywhere from now on, if I say USDA or C D B G or whatever, and you don't understand what that is, stop me, because it's U S Department of Agriculture, it's a community development block grant, and we get used to saying it, everybody nods and goes on, but, uh, depending on where the money comes from, some of this is similar, some of it is different, just depends on, on where you get the money, if it's Appalachian Regional Commission, or if it's Kentucky Industrial Structure Authority, or, uh, abandoned mine lands, or wherever it may be, but.
The grant world is a very acronym-heavy world to live in, and, you know, that's what I tell all of my new people when they start, you, you have to understand, we get so used to it that we don't even realize we're spouting acronyms, um, so, you know, anytime you don't understand an acronym, always just by word, explain that, and, you know, we'll always stop and explain it to you, so.
And I think we're going to try to upload this one section, independent of the actual council meeting, so people who watch the council meeting, they can sit through this, but hopefully give them a little bit of idea of what it takes to go from, from an idea to actually get it built out and, and be in compliance with everything you have to do, so.
And we're going to take and build off of this matter, and make sure that we build something that's very similar to this, but actually explain it in a little bit more depth, so that we can put it on our website, too, so.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's just important, because like I said earlier before the camera come on, one of the biggest things I hear sometimes is, am I going to live to see it? Or I'll never live to see it, or whatever it is, and I get, you know, the, the time it takes to go from this to this, people forget we ever announced it, so then I understand, you know, where they're at with it. Because I remember when they put the big Hardy sign up, I was just coming to town, Hardee's, me and my buddy took a picture next to it, because I thought, that'll never happen. But it did, so that's separate from where we're at.
But the grant world is a very slow world to live in. Um, it can sometimes be very frustrating. Sure. Uh, because you, you know, you, you want things to happen very, very fast, but it takes a long process to get there. So, you know, be patient, you know, when we say something, and it's happening, it is, you just may not see it.
Jennifer, I think that's good for now. This concludes Grants 101, so stay tuned for the next chapter of this. All righty, uh, engineers, you just got talked about a lot, what you got going on back there.
Yeah. I'm not going to run over town over there, there's a man on the project y'all got open. Everything else is pretty much the same as, as last month, but, uh, for the ADA project, they do have the, uh, the base pour, it's waterproof, advanced on the weatherization of the air drain on the outside, keeps the, the water stuck and set against the concrete material in it. And I think they're planning tomorrow on backfilling around the pit, and, uh, they'll move on from there.
Yeah, they're going to pour stem wall on the foot.
Yeah, and stem walls. Other than that, it's about all.
All righty. Uh, E R S I S, the only thing, we've got a tilting date of the, starting to say N R C S, National Resource Conservation Service coming to town to look at some, uh, erosion and some stream mitigation measures, uh, we applied for some emergency money for that, so we're hoping that they'll be able to help us do a little bit of work with that. That's, that's ten and a half. All righty, we need to approve the Section 3 plan, and the plan is there for your review, but do you want to explain a little bit of what that is that way?
So the, the Section 3 plan, um, this is required of your C D B G grant. Uh, basically, what this says is that if a disadvantaged worker can be hired, you will hire a disadvantaged worker. Um, it's just a base requirement of your C D B G grant. Um, every, every recipient of a C D B, uh, person or grant has to have one of these in place, um, so that, it's kind of a standard agreement of it. Um, we have to make the contractor do this as well, um, so it's just your, your basis.
Okay, need a motion to approve the Section 3 plan. I'm having a motion.
Oh, second.
All right, have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Post, same side. Randall, Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Resolution.
This will be Resolution 4/7, City of Jenkins WWTP improvements, adoption of a resolution, City of Jenkins, grants called entity, close, 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 grants, authorizing the completion and filing of a governmental resource, accelerating needed transformation grants, G R A N T, post-grants program, and 2024 project application, up to $75,467 in grant programs of 2024 funds with the Cabinet of Economic Development, grants called C E D, close, 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 grants, authorizing and directing the mayor's, quote, authorized representative, in quotes, close, grants, of the City of Jenkins, grants, quote, entity, close, 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 grants, executing any documents which are deemed necessary by C E D to carry out this project, and authorizing the authorized representative to act as the authorized correspondent for the project, permitting review and execution of all agreements and requests of all dispersals related to the grant program of 2024. Whereas the entity desires to promote and carry out community development efforts on behalf of the residents of Letcher County, grants, quote, county, and, quote, close, grants, by supporting the grant program of 2024 project, and whereas the entity is submitting or has submitted an application for the following federal grant program, Appalachian Regional Commission, with the intent to access federal grant resources that are in the public interest and for a public purpose, they seek funding assistance in preparing and/or completing applications for federal resources. Whereas it is recognized that the grant program of 2024 monies available to the entity for the purpose stated herein, subject to care as 147A.150 to 147A.166, impose certain obligations and responsibilities of the public entity, and will require, among other things, grants of one, approval of a satisfactory application submitted to C E D for approval, grants two, proper registration to do business within the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and grants three, other obligations of the entity in connection with receiving grant program of 2024 monies for the purpose stated herein, and therefore be resolved on the 7th day of April 2024 by the City of Jenkins, add a grant program 2024 application on behalf of the entity for grant program of 2024 monies up to $75,467, or the WWTP improvements shall be submitted to C E D. The entity shall provide such additional information and furnish such documentation as may be required, and the authorized representative shall act as the authorized correspondent for the project. Motion made by blank and senior by blank, which members, all members, all in your favor, sir, Chief of Line Mayor, Attorney Session Clerk.
All righty, entertain a motion to approve.
I make motion to approve this resolution. What's the number, Randall?
4/7.
4/7.
Resolution 4/7. I'll second.
All righty, have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Post, by the same side. All righty, now to the Jenkins City Hall, pay requisition, certificate number two.
Oh, yes. There's a, there's a typo over there, it says 2024.
Yeah. You need on the, uh.
On the resolution.
Can I have a second? Oh, yeah, okay. All right, you, uh, you made a motion.
I did.
All right, so you accept, you accept the change from the floor to change that date to 25?
Yes. Now to, uh, requisition certificate number two, uh, it's in the amount of $47,106.
I'll make a motion to approve payment, requisition number two.
I'll second that.
All righty, have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, same side. All righty, Resolution for Administrative Services for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery and Abandoned Mine Lands Economic Recovery. City of Westwater Treatment Project. And that's why they shorten all of them, because it's a sale.
Resolution 47A of the City of Jenkins, authorizing the signing of a contract for administrative services, whereas the City of Jenkins, grants, they quote, CD, unquote, close, grants, have been awarded funds to the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery, grants, C D V G dash D R, close, grants, to the Department of Local Government, grants, D L G, close, grants, and the Abandoned Mine Lands Economic Revitalization, grants, AMLER, close, grants, whereas in order to properly administer the grant, as required by D L G and C D B G dash D R and A M L E R, proper loan and grant administration must be performed, and the City does not have the personnel trained in the administration of C D B G dash D R and A M L E R funds. And whereas the Kentucky River Area Development District, grants, the quote, district, unquote, close, grants, has employed easily or trained by state, or the administration of the C D B G dash D R and A M L E R funds, and the City wishes to contract with the district, and the district is willing to be contracted with, now therefore be resolved on the 7th day of April 2025, by the City that the mayor has hereby authorized to sign the administrative contract and enter into the contract with the district, both taking as follows. City Council noted, motion carried to station clerk, signature line, mayor.
Alrighty, entertain a motion for the Resolution for Administrative Services.
Make that motion. I'll second.
Alright, have a motion second, all in favor, say aye. Post the same sign. Alright, also, in your package, you've got the Jenkins Revitalization Resilience Planning Grant Resolution, we just signed the contract on. And what that is, it's gonna help us sort of build our own mitigation plan, plus look at a lot of other things that we can do. So from the time we got the stream gauges and the stream started monitoring, getting all that data, then we've been awarded notice of award, let's say it that way, the 5.2 million for the stormwater. So we signed Friday, and we're waiting on the executive copy. So we're using that data to get to that, and then we use this resiliency plan to make sure that we follow the different mitigation measures we need. You know, the sad truth is, we're rebuilding Jenkins from the six phases of water we built up till now, we're getting the infrastructure in a way that we can build and go bigger. Because, I hate to say it this way, but when it's in the news that people's water's off for weeks, it wasn't in the news that our water was off for weeks because of the planning that you all helped get done. So we're building from the stream gauges, the water, the sewer, and all these other things. But then again, we're rebuilding everything that can solve put in the ground. And then stuff that people put in the ground after that, people that filled in the corner of their yard, people that put water heaters, tanks in the ground, and then all those type of things. We're hoping to address in that 5.2 million dollars most of that. But to make sure we're on track, this resiliency plan will help us go into the future and look at projects and make sure we build here, we won't cause problems here, and make sure that we're doing everything we need to do, all building off the data that come from the stream gauges. And it's just something we need to do, so. And this is a D R two, so this is no match, there's nothing. You ready?
This will be Resolution 47B, Resolution City of Jenkins authorized the signing of a contract for administrative services, whereas the City of Jenkins, Grants, the quote, C D, in quote, close, Grants, have been awarded funds through the Community Development Block Grant, Grants, C D V G, close, Grants, through the Department of Local Government, Grants, D L G, close, Grants. And whereas in order to properly administer the grant, as the private D L G and C D V G, proper loan and grant administration must be performed, and the city does not have personnel trained in the administration of C D V G funds. And whereas the City, and whereas the Kentucky River Area Development District, Grants, the quote, district, in quote, close, Grants, has employed employees that are trained by the state of Kentucky for administration of C D V G funds. And the city wishes to contract with the district, and the district is willing to contract with, now therefore be resolved this 7th day of April 2025 by the City of Jenkins, and the mayor is hereby directed, is hereby authorized to sign the administrative contract and enter into said contract with the district, vote taken, the City Council motion carried to station clerk, signature line, mayor.
Alrighty, entertain a motion.
I'll make motion when you adopt Resolution 47B. I'll second.
Alrighty, having a motion second, all in favor, say aye. Post the same sign.
Let me suggest in the future, you probably need to identify the grant, just so we can match it in your files, because this is, this is not specific in terms of what you're administering.
She was in a hurry, and she...
You'll get a lot of these to vote on, because they need to go to a particular project.
Because it's actually identical.
Is it not listed in there, which ones?
Our contract is our resolution. I'll fill them out, just make sure that's what they meant.
I thought I listed two cases. That wasn't ready yet. Alrighty. Citizens concerned, she leave anything?
When I was wondering, I was thinking if we got citywide cleanup that we could get together. I can tell you, I'm garbage free, and it just, I can't drive, I have to put fine there on. But it is improved. Did they work on this road down here?
They picked up from about 50, well, we picked up.
I thought so, see, that's how observant I am, I'm like...
And it wasn't hard to miss. It wasn't hard to miss.
No, because the garbage was unreal, and the, I mean, all the way down, and I was like, okay, that's better, that's improved, okay? Thank you, thank you. Now, the other thing is, the people that live in the apartment buildings close to the Union Hall, they are walking in the road late at night, and it wears me to death, because they walk right in the road. And I'm so scared, when I'm gonna hit one myself personally. They have no reflective clothing, and is there anything we can do to keep them?
There's a sidewalk that comes up over hill, or that really doesn't come back.
That's what I thought there was, there's a sidewalk up there, isn't there? That's what I thought. And they're not using it, they're walking right in the middle of the road. And they, they act like it's thorough, you know, that it's the pedestrian. I mean, I'm observing of them, but that was. But I want to tell you, I so appreciate all that garbage man picked up down there, because it was horrible. And I will help in any way, at any time, to organize projects so we can keep our city.
We'll have another one closer to Jenkins Base.
Okay, sounds good.
And that one, I'm pretty sure it was, well, part of it was our guys picked up so far down, but then the Freewill Baptist Church at Dunham, I'm pretty sure is the one that helped finish the rest of it.
Yeah, it is like so, I mean, I don't know how many bags they had to pick up, but it had, but I do thank you, and I appreciate that, because I try to keep clean around my area, and I would, I would love to see other people, but...
We would too, it just...
Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay.
But the concern of the people walking on the main road at night, I mean, it scares me to death, because I'm like...
Alright.
That's mainly between Brickyard Hill and Union Hall, right?
Yeah, that's where I'm so bad. Starting right there at the edge of where the apartment, and it's been many different things, that one building, I guess Steve, does he, anyway, that was the property I'm talking about, from there on down to that section right there, they walk right in the middle of it.
But that walkway you were talking about, though, is really not usable.
It's old.
It's a path. It's sort of a cow path.
Yeah.
Is it, is it?
I don't know if there's, something, I agree with that, if there's a way to put a sidewalk there, that's a section that really needs a sidewalk from that building to the Union Hall.
I know that caused, I mean, I know, I just don't want to see a live lock.
Maybe that's something we can do.
I really do think there's lots of danger there, very much.
We were part of a pedestrian and walkability, bikeability study, and that, we had to identify that to go back to the state, look at it, but that's one section was done.
And not to talk about them, but they have brought so many different, like, one boy's pretty crippled, and walks with a cane, and, and there's just so many down there that they all use that road. And it didn't used to be like that.
There's some dollar store buggies down that way, too.
With the dogs, you know, they're, they're dogs, this is humans, it should have some thought.
Well, I'll go back to the backpedal plan and talk to the state about it, because that's... I don't know where we would put it, but maybe that'd help us on... Libby Lane. Alright, while the council's thinking on anything y'all want to talk about, I would, Randall, would you care to read the Autism Acceptance Month proclamation?
Autism Acceptance Month proclamation, whereas autism is a complex neurodevelopmental disorder that affects individuals in various ways, impacting communication, social interaction, and behavior. Whereas the City of Jenkins recognizes the importance of promoting awareness, acceptance, and inclusion of individuals with autism spectrum disorder, Grants, A S D, close, Grants, in our community, whereas autism affects approximately 1 in 54 children in the United States of individuals of all ages and backgrounds living with autism. And whereas the City of Jenkins acknowledges the invaluable contribution of individuals with autism and their families, and the ongoing need for support, education, and research to enhance the quality of life for individuals with A S D. And whereas the City of Jenkins encourages everyone to engage in activities and programs designed to raise awareness, foster understanding, and create an environment where people with autism are accepted, respected, and given opportunity to thrive. And whereas we recognize the importance of creating inclusive communities where individuals of all abilities are valued, empowered, and supported in their educational, social, and professional endeavors. Now therefore, the City of Jenkins does hereby proclaim the month of April as Autism Acceptance Month. And the City of Jenkins calls upon all residents to support individuals with autism and their families, and to join in efforts to build a more inclusive and understanding community. Now, dated the 7th day of April 2025, signature line, mayor, city clerk, at this station.
And we don't really have to have a approval of this, but I would like to ask you all to approve this proclamation.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Motion second, all in favor, say aye. And this means a lot to me, because my granddaughter, Aubrey Freeman, has really excelled from the time they solved what was going on. I thought she was already here. And once they figured it out, she's got great parents, she's got great support, and she goes through the middle of all the world like nothing, so it's, it's something special to me. Thank you all. Alrighty, we're looking at this, and I talked to Randall something about it, and we need to line up our fines for litter and dogs based on the ordinance, and maybe revise it and upgrade it, so he's gonna have a look at that for the next time to see where it's at, because the tickets we've been writing, the ticket book Jim's got, has got some fines that don't necessarily match up. And most people, if they get a ticket, they come in and take care of it, or they come in and say, there's a certain situation going on, I'll take care of it, and then we can sort of weight it. But for the ones that won't, I would like to, to upgrade, or I don't know what you're gonna call it, but anyway, get all those in line with the new ordinance, and that way we put a little more emphasis on the litter and the, and the dog problem. And we've been working with the county, trying to figure it out, we've got four or five hotspots that there are several dogs. And I like dogs, and people love dogs, but when they run in packs, they act different than when they're by themselves. So it's just something that we need to take care of. Other than that, just a couple quick updates. Two Thursdays ago, I met with Transportation Cabinet, they come up and we're looking at the Grand View site for the road, for the access road around the front. They also brought two different consultant groups in, Palmer Engineers will take a look at the road around the front, and then H D R Associates is going to look at the actual planning of the streets and sidewalks where the project is. That is just like one of these grant processes. It's been this piece, that piece, figured out. Transportation Cabinet's applying for the D R for the roads, we've applied for disaster waters for the water, Phase 6 that goes up to the property and across the property, and then we've got two D Rs and something else in for the actual water to the homes. So it, it takes, I used to call it a funding scheme, now it don't sound good, so they called a funding stack. So how do you layer this funding together to help make this happen? So even though it's sort of a state pushed project, it's on us, and cred, and engineers, and different people thinking about it, how we're actually gonna put all this stuff together to get to the point to where they can start building houses, and where the other 140 acres can be start developed into business and commercial, and how do we make all that work? How do we put a park in the middle, that it all comes together? So that was good news to hear from them, and what was gonna happen with that. The only other thing, sometime between now and the next meeting, when we do the first reading of the budget, I want to try to put us together a budget workshop. We've not had money to put any kind of capital expenses together, we paid off garbage trucks, but we've not got money to borrow money again. But try to look in a roundabout way, how we find a piece here, a piece here, that we're not raising anything up on anybody, but the cost of everything has went up, and we've not done anything to keep up with it. Hopefully, though, when the high ground site comes and we get that tax base built, and we don't have to raise anything, but then we get more money coming in based on the tax base. But that's a year or two down the road, and we just need to be looking at it. But we'll have all that together and stuff for y'all to look at.
One thing I'd like to mention, too, that you asked, a couple months ago, we had a call from a business who wanted to locate an industrial park, but they needed answers quick, or we lost that one, it went somewhere else. And if we get a business up there that uses a lot of electricity, then that'll help us down here.
Yeah.
Now, there's another one, I just got a call today, and their requirement is to have dark fiber. Where do we stand on that?
One local provider is applying for B money to do that, the other local provider, I don't feel like...
But they need it for all, so we'll lose that.
Well, I don't know, I mean, the fiber's over here, but we'd have to get it up there.
Right.
I've got a meeting scheduled with, I don't want to give up names, but anyway, one of the local providers, we did a letter of support, and they're...
Is it down on page eight? I mean, have they done any? There's fiber there, but not enough to pass. What they call dark fiber turn, that's my story.
Yeah. It's that close, but getting it up there by August, I don't know how they could, you know, we can look at it. Alrighty, I feel like I'm not remembering something, but I'd entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you all.
Do you have Medicare? Have questions about Medicare Part D? Call me, Scott Lovelace, at 606-768-3589. Would you like to know what Medicare Part A and Part B covers, and the amount you pay for covered services? Do you need information about a plan that pays for hearing aids? I can answer these questions for you, so call me, Scott Lovelace, at 606-768-3589. I specialize in Medicare, so I can help you.
Hello, Letcher County, my name is Kevin Hall, and I am the owner of the all-new Hall &amp; Jones Funeral Home, Jenkins Chapel. We're here to provide you with honest, sincere service in your time of need. The people in Jenkins, McRoberts, in Fleming Neon, in Palm, Virginia, they're such hardworking people, they've worked with their hands their whole life, many of you are U M W A members. My grandfather was a U M W A member, and I seen how wonderful they took care of my grandmother when something happened to my grandfather. With that same token, that's what we're here to do for you and your family, to take care of you. I invite you to stop by our funeral home, come in and visit with us, or give us a call at 606-821-2191.
When working traffic across Kentucky, responding to crashes involving deaths or injuries is the toughest part of our job.
When you drive, there's so much out of your control.
But what you do have control over is wearing a seatbelt.
Less than two seconds, that is all the time it takes to buckle up.
Those two seconds will give you the best chance of surviving a crash.
From Parkville all the way to Paducah.
Always buckle up.
A message from the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety. Is there a beep or a chirp coming from your smoke alarm? Knowing the difference can save you, your family, and your home. Hear a beep beep beep? Get on your feet. Get to your outside meeting place and call 911. Hear a chirp? Make a change. A chirping alarm means the battery or the entire alarm needs to be replaced. Make sure the smoke alarms in your home meet the needs of everyone, including those who are deaf and hard of hearing. Learn more at firepreventionweek.org.
Tom Keating offers years of experience as a certified specialist for NAPA collision centers. His hours are Monday through...